Yeah, I like it.
Brian's books have not gotten this much use for years.
What's that? Oh, I know. They're functional.
I'm glad we're still getting some use from them. That question is beyond me, outside of my expertise.
Sure, I didn't. Quite sure.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Campbell City Council for Tuesday, February 7th, 2023 to order. And I have a roll call though, I mean, excuse me, a roll call. Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Scuzzola.
Here.
Councilmember Fertado.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Present.
Mayor Bybee.
Present.
At this time, I'd like to invite two students from the audience to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Manasvini Zing and Sanskrita Zing. If you come to the podium and if everyone in the audience would stand and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Proclamation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This brings us to special presentations and proclamation, and it's a recognition recognition of the STEM winners of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association 2022 Synopsis Championship Science Fair. It's a lot of words. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Forrest Williams, who is the former City of San Jose Councilmember and current board member of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association, to tell us about the science fair and to introduce the students. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. And also the council.
The mic's not on.
Can they hear me now? Thank you. I thank you for the consideration of these students. As we look at the world, if you look at your everyday activity, there's not much you can do without science in the year. I mean, it touches every aspect of our life, and it's going to touch our future. So as we go about our activity of planning for the future, we must consider that these youngsters here in our presence today, the ones that we have to mold and shape and get them ready for the future, we're going to leave them a lot of problems to solve. So we want to make sure that they have the capability of doing those types of things. One example, which is not a very good example in the sense of the results, is the coronavirus, which we needed the world to get together and work on this problem. And in the future, we'll have to relate to others in the world, and I think that will bring us closer together in terms of what we'll be doing. The Science and Engineering Fair Association, our mission is to excite students and parents, teachers, enemies, friends, whatever, about the beauty of science, what it's about, the discoveries, the excitement of it, and to encourage them to consider engineering or STEM as a career option. And we ask parents and friends to get involved. You know, they can help as well through their time or resources or whatever. But I'm so happy to present you tonight. Now, we have two students that have gone through the program, and this is kind of like a culmination where the students have the technology and they learn and everything. And as happened in the past many times, projects come to an end, they go on the show. We wanted them to relate to you. You are responsible for them. They live in your district. Their parents pay taxes, all of those things. So they are part of you. And you're showing consideration for them is fantastic. It will encourage them to move forward to the future. So really, thank you for that. And we have two students. Would you please come up? Especially.
Hi, my name is Sanskriti. I'm a junior at Basis Independent Silicon Valley. And the project I did in this program related to finding this calcification or locating the calcification in a heart specifically using a CT or a computed topography scan. And there's two kinds, a gated and non-gated CT scans, very popular in the medical field. And usually, we use something called our gated CT scans to find out if there's that we have a chance of a heart attack, or if you have any kind of heart disease, because it's just more easier to find it on these scans. But my project relates to looking at this non-gated scan, which is just a different form of this gated scan, but it's more periodically taken. So it would provide more faster methods to be able to detect if this person has any chance of a heart attack or heart disease. And I did that all through machine learning and different CS-related techniques. And so that was my project. Thank you for having me.
Hi, my name is. Hi, my name is Manasvini. I'm a seventh grader at Rolling Hills Middle School. And my project was the detection and segmentation of pneumonia on CXR images using machine learning. So what I did in this project, I trained a model to take CXR, which are chest X-rays, and I trained it to find where the pneumonia was located. And pneumonia is a very deadly disease, and it affects many people in the US. And I thought it was a really big problem that I could help solve through AI and machine learning. So that was my project.
So do any council members have a comment or would like to comment?
I just wanted to, first of all, congratulate you. And your research is remarkable because it involves some of the most advanced science and some of the puzzling aspects affecting medicine. Heart disease, you know, the number one disease in the world, it's extremely important and better ways to diagnose it, as well as with pneumonias, so many different types of pneumonias. And we have pneumonias, and we have many different types of vaccines, fortunately, to cover most of those. And so your research is right in line with current topics of medicine. And so I congratulate you and thank you.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yes. Thank you very much for coming tonight. If you are our future, you guys are doing great. I can't believe you're in seventh grade. Wonderful topics. Getting to the point where I'm older in my life, things like calcium buildup in your heart are very important to track and study. And so I think that's great. And I can't believe you're in seventh grade doing study on pneumonia and looking at the CRX images. So I just think you guys are wonderful, and I'm glad we're here recognizing you tonight.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, thanks so much, Sanskriti. Manasvini, really appreciate your coming and sharing. This is always, and Mr. Williams is always such a highlight of our time on the council, to hear the incredible work that people in our community are doing, and really encourage you to continue, because I guarantee it will take you very far. Thank you for your work.
And Councilmember Scuzzola?
Yeah, I just want to echo everything that everyone said right now. And I have one key question about the AI. This doesn't have anything to do with our robot overlords or anything like that. I'm just, I just want to make sure that you're not working on that, right? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Just congratulations. And it just brings me back to my high school days and dissecting frogs. We've been caught, you've come such a long way, and it's just amazing the amount of technology and knowledge that you have. And I also want to acknowledge one, a third student who was unable to be here tonight from Parker School. Her name is Eliah Grover, and her project was comparing the quantity of microplastics in wild and farmed fish. So congratulations to her as well. And if you wait there a minute, I'll come down and give your certificate. Thank you for all the kind comments. And then this is also for leading the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. We really appreciate you being part of our meeting. Yes. You want to do separate? And that's for your award, and then also for leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, thank you very much for your continued work in the community. I remember many years, your many years of service on the San Jose City Council, and it's nice to see that you're still very active in such an important field.
Okay, we have no communications and petitions tonight. The next item is oral request. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested, but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak under oral requests? If you could come to the podium and identify yourself?
My name is Rajapalila. First of all, welcome to the new council members. I guess I missed the last few ones. For the other people, you folks know me. I keep bugging you for the development standards and the general planning stuff. So the multi-unit objective standards thing is coming up in March for city council. I know it's going to be with the Planning Commission soon. I just wanted to make a request for you folks. It's a big document, needs a lot of reading. So just wanted to give you like a reminder, hey, this is coming. So please go through it, read it a lot. There are a lot of things, you know, you need, that need attention. Just wanted to remind. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And do we have anybody online that wishes to speak on and on agenda wise items? We do not? Okay, thank you. Next one. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on forward.
Good evening. My name is Indu Adikari. I am a resident of 91 North First Street, across from this city hall. I would like to speak on the topic of the Mills Act. I fully support implementing the Mills Act and strongly support the preservation of the historic nature of the house and the town. We really enjoy living here. We are immigrant from Nepal. So as a. We would like to support, we would like some support from the city council as well, because to maintain the historic nature of the house, these are more than like on the hundred plus years of houses. We like some support from the city council as well. As a homeowner, it's a significant financial cost for us. We spent already great amount of money to repair. Still, it requires, you know, a lot of money, as we realized from the storm and other things, we just realized. So I just wanted to request that the passing, like implementing this act by the city, so that we get some support to maintain these houses. And so thank you for your time and giving me opportunity to comment on this.
Thank you very much. As a council, we're not able to discuss it, but if you leave your contact number and name and information with the city clerk, we can add you to the list for upcoming meetings when that topic does come before the city council. Thank you. You're welcome. Anybody else in the audience that I want to speak? Okay, I have a few announcements tonight. February is Black History Month, and a time to honor the contributions and legacy of African Americans across United States history and society, from activists and civil rights pioneers, such as Harriet Tubman, Martin Luther King Jr., Malcolm X, and Rosa Parks, to leaders in industry, politics, science, culture, and more. Beginning with President Gerald Ford in 1976, every American president has designated February as Black History Month and endorsed the specific theme. The 2023 theme is Black Resistance and explores how African Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression in all forms, especially the racial terrorism of lynching racial pogroms and police killings since the nation's earliest days. Next, for 131 years, early settlers and Heritage Day has been a Campbell tradition, and it is now the longest-running community celebration in California. The event pays tribute to the history of Campbell and those who pioneered its beginnings. The 2023 celebration is scheduled for Monday, February 20th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Orchard City Banquet Hall. The guest speaker is Janan Bohm, House Historian and Special Projects Manager for the Winchester Mystery House. Additional details can be found at the Campbell Chamber of Commerce website. Campbell's 46th Annual Valentine 5K Fund Run Walk on Saturday, February 11th, at 9:00 AM, is up, is coming. Don't delay. Get registered in advance to receive your free race shirt and medals. Please visit campbellca.gov for more information and to register. The AARP Tax Aid Program will provide income tax assistance free of charge through April 14th at the Campbell Community Center. The AARP Tax Aid Program provides tax assistance to anyone free of charge with a focus on taxpayers who are over 50 and have a low to moderate income. For more information, please visit campbellca.gov. The Campbell Youth Commission is hosting a teen job fair for part-time seasonal and internships on Saturday, March 4th, from 12:30 PM to 2:30 PM at the Campbell Community Center, Orchard City Banquet Hall. Employers interested in hosting a table, please visit bit.ly backslash Campbell Job Fair. Forms must be completed by February 17th, and spaces are limited. And finally, city hall offices will be closed on Monday, February 20th, in observance of Presidents' Day. Police and emergency services will remain open to the public. The next item is the consent calendar. Note, all matters listed under consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or a member of the public. Anyone wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed and prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in order in which it appears. Are there any council members, staff, or members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Anybody online? We do have somebody online. Adam, would you like to pull an item off the consent calendar?
Yes, I wanted to make a comment on item six.
Hello, Adam. Can you hear us?
Yes. Can you not hear? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? If you can hear me, I'd like to pull.
Adam, we can't hear you. Are you having technical difficulties?
Maybe. You should be able to hear me now. Sorry, let me. Sorry, can you hear me now?
I don't think so. He's connecting now to audio. Okay. But the purpose of him to call in to want to speak.
Hi. Can you hear me now?
Okay. Okay.
Am I audible? I am attempting to, I attempted to use my phone to call in. Is that working? It's a supportive comment, anyway. It's all right. I'll.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Adam. He disappeared. Okay. 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 Okay, I will table the consent calendar for the moment and move on to item seven. And possibly, Adam, you can figure out your connection and call back. So now we're going to come on to item seven, which is a public hearing to consider an interim ordinance to adopt urgency revisions to Title 21 related to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units, JADUs, to conform with recent state legislation, AB 2221 and SB 897. And our presenter is Daniel Fama, Senior Planner.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you is a interim ordinance to adopt urgency measures to the city's local ADU ordinance. As a recurring thing with the city legislature, the state did adopt a new series of bills last year that went into effect January 1. Requiring further revisions to local ADU ordinances. Because the city's ordinance was not updated as of January 1st, it technically is known void. And we are not positioned to locally implement our local standards. And interim ordinance allows immediate effect of the revisions that I will discuss in a moment that would go into effect immediately upon a fourth fifth council vote. Until such time that the revisions can be made permanent. So broadly speaking, how we've looked at restructuring the ADU ordinance a bit to try to clarify and isolate a lot of the exceptions to state law. The state over the years has created more and more exceptions to number of development standards that currently exist throughout the city's ADU ordinance. So staff's revisions and the interim ordinance will consolidate those into a new section that were using HCD terminology of a statewide exemption ADU. And that would basically provide the parameters in which an ADU, that's an large group of 800 square feet, no taller than 16 in height and then setbacks of four feet inside rear. Are exempt from lot coverage if they are building separation, open space requirements, which are all being placed. That exception now also now includes front setback requirements. As written however, a front setback exception of an ADU that's a part of a house with only a portion of the house, that's the ADU, not the entire house. So we're trying to contain the number of exceptions that are coming under ADUs. Additionally, the state also created a de facto amnesty provision effectively prohibiting the city from denying an permit for an ADU that does not comply with the law or state standards. If it was constructed and fired to January 1st, 2018. Now there's a new section that speaks to that and also reasonable restrictions on ADUs that would be created within the provision. Building heights were increased to 18 feet, that has been incorporated. Parking is no longer required when an ADU is proposed in conjunction with a new house. In combination with all the previous exceptions, that basically means there is no parking requirement for ADUs. The draft ordinance effectively recognizes that by leaving the parking requirement entirely. And then lastly, the law does allow the city to deny an ADU permit if there's a health and safety finding for a number of different reasons. We've incorporated that into draft ordinance and provided an allowance for the building official to make a determination. And for his decision to be appealable to the building board of appeals to provide another review process. This interim ordinance would be effective for 45 days. That doesn't mean bringing it back an extension at the council's March 21st meeting. And then the formal ordinance would be incorporated into the comprehensive, so it could have stayed as tendably scheduled for later in March after the council's creation. With that, I'll take any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Any questions of council? Mr. Landry?
Regarding the height, and I'm sorry, I asked you today earlier, but regarding the height going to 18 feet. Typically, a floor to ceiling is eight feet for residential. This could potentially allow them to have a second floor. Is that going to be allowed?
So we actually already do allow two-story ADUs and properties that have two-story homes. So that's already allowance, that's baked in. This just allows for height and technically speaking, the law also allows for an additional two feet on the 18 feet necessary for homeowner to match the roof pitch of the house. So it's just more exigence to any number of standards, but because the city does allow two stories from our perspective, it doesn't make much of a change.
Okay, and then regarding the front setback. We can go zero lot line to the back of the curb, back on the sidewalk, or does it still have to be some level of setback?
I mean practically most streets in the city do have a five-foot public utilities that the building would still be out of. But there are probably some streets that do not have a public utility basement, so theoretically, yes, it could be right up to the back of the sidewalk.
18 feet high?
Yes.
Wow. And this, we have no say over that, that has to be in this ordinance?
That is correct.
Wow, thank you.
Any other council members? Okay, this time I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item.
Hi, Rajat Pallila, 1216 West Hacienda Avenue. Again, thanks for the opportunity. As many of you know, I keep coming to these meetings for the ADU stuff. Thanks to Vice Mayor Landry for, you know, letting us look at her ADU a few years ago when the whole discussion about this was going on. I wanted to bring a couple of things to your notice. The floor area ratio, the state, like for 800 square feet and below ADUs, the state anyways says floor area ratio does not matter. But if you look at the San Thomas neighborhood, there is a very restrictive lot coverage and things like that. So considering that the neighborhood plan already makes two restrictive lot coverage areas. I would like to request the city to make it 1,200 square feet. I know for the rest of the city, you can still keep it at 800. Because the neighborhood plan already have this excessive restrictive, you know, lot coverage, I want that for that area can we make it 1,200, right? It's only fair when, when the neighborhood plan is trying to reduce this, it's fair to, you know, allow that neighborhood to have a little more space for the ADU setlist. The other thing is the setback standards. I'm seeing two different setback standards between a detached ADU and a detached ADU. A detached ADU, like if it is a detached, like there is a four feet setback, whereas the interior and attached ADU, the standard is like same as primary dwelling. So when we have four feet setback is what the state is asking, then why go for the setback as a primary dwelling unit, right? The same applies for the other setbacks of separation as well as accessory structures. Can we reduce that to five instead of 10? In the matter of time. Yeah, the other thing is, you know, page number 1118 of the ordinance or packet 54, there is a statement, a point here, there is a statement that says the community development director may require recordation of deed restricted document. Like I'm still not able to understand why that is required when the state is not asking for it. Yeah, I think, yeah, and the thanks to staff for over the years for keeping on top of this, like I know the ADU laws are changing almost like every year. I know they keep doing a wonderful job. Thanks to staff, especially Daniel, he has been at this for many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber? And I don't see anyone online, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. And could we get a response from staff on the the question that was raised regarding the allowable space?
Well, I mean, in regard to the Santa Monica area neighborhood plan, there are on the larger lot sizes, properties that have a lesser lot coverage. But because the state law effectively exempts out 800 square feet, it has the same effect for everybody. He's referring to, I guess, really the impact of the overall development capacity of, is a primary house, which is really a distinct and separate discussion from ADUs. What he would be suggesting would be arguably a bit more favorable to some homeowners compared to others. And with regard to the of the deed restrictions, that is correct, that the state does not require deed restrictions. The ordinance that we currently have actually requires the city to require these restrictions. We substituted the Ruchao with May to allow some reconsideration if that's necessary, but still providing an allowance should the director feel it's necessary moving forward. Generally, the deed restriction serves as just a reminder to new homeowners that a property that has an ADU, that they can't be rented out as an Airbnb, for instance. So that there's no confusion.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification. Is there council discussion? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Everybody rush to your mics there, guys. I make a motion that the city council adopt an interim ordinance approving urgency revisions to Title 21 to conform with recent state legislation, AB-2221 and SB 897.
Second.
So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Scazola to approve the staff recommendation. Could we have a roll call vote? Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye. Being an interim ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell, adopting urgency revisions to Title 21 related to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to conform with recent state legislation, AB 2221 and SB 897. File number PLN 2022-166.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to waive further reading?
Motion to waive further reading?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry, a second by Councilmember Lopez to waive further reading. Could we have roll call vote? Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna circle back to the consent calendar. I don't see that Adam came back on, so let's move forward with that item. Any council member wishing to remove an item? If not, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move consent.
Second.
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Dan. So I have a motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Vice Mayor Landry to approve the consent calendar items two through six. Can we have a roll call? Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Aye.
Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Okay, we have no new business tonight and our last item is unfinished business. Item eight, Campbell's Plan for Housing 2023 through 2031 Housing Element. And our presenter is Robbie Wood, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor Bybee, council members. Most of this presentation will be done by Stephen Rose. I do have some introductory comments to help set the stage. So broadly for our new council members and retaining council members, the housing element has been ongoing work for about a year and a half. Glad, glad to report broadly with this item tonight, staff leaves are on called the home stretch, rounding third base and hopefully heading towards home. So, so moving back a little bit, the councilor member back, we're in the process where Campbell drafts a housing element, they send it to the state. State Office of Housing and Community Development are required to review it and deem if it can be certified as required by state law. We've gone back and forth with the state a little bit. The most recent touch point in November, council reviewed changes to the housing element responding to earlier comments from the state. And authorized staff to resubmit the document to the state. This was our second review. Day after Christmas, Christmas present, Campbell did send a revised housing element to the state for review. Happy report, the state usually has a 60-day window then to review those revisions, come back in writing and let Campbell know are the revisions allowing the housing out to be compliant with state law. The state reached out to us a little early, so they contacted us in early January, set up a call with us in mid-January. And what we had what they call a deliberative call in mid-January to go over the comments. And I will start by saying, as they opened the conversation with in January, they had a lot of praise for Campbell's housing element. I have some paraphrased comments here I did want to pass on to the council. They said they were very, very pleased with Campbell's housing element. They did say it was among the best that they've seen among all the housing elements in the Bay Area, so I did want to pass this kudos on. And then finally, and I recommend the council come back to this a later date, they did recommend that we do consider that Campbell pursue a pro-housing designation. This is a designation, if it's achieved, allows you earlier access or higher ratings if we apply for grant funding in the future. So that's something we can discuss in the future. With that, they did recommend about a half a dozen final changes, in their words. They said if council adopted these changes into the ordinance, it would allow to be certified. So we are with you tonight, we didn't want to miss the chance to wait for the 60 days and do that. We wanted to come to you tonight with those recommended changes and the recommended revisions by staff. If council agrees, have those authorized. The state has agreed if Campbell commits to these authorizations, shows these changes this month, mid-February, they would commit by the end of the month to return to us and document that the housing element can be certified. And in staff's opinion, if you look ahead, there's a heavy lift in March, you're set to review the housing element, general plan, EIR, zoning standards. And the multifamily development design standards, that's not a small lift. But by putting these issues to bed, we think that will help at least wrap up the housing element and allow you to close on any loose ends with some of those other items. So tonight, we are here and Stephen Rose, Senior Planner, will present the handful of changes. Staff has gone through those. Do want to report that as we are a bit of a shuttle diplomacy at the moment. We went back to the state, had a second call late last week. And, and reported state, these are the proposed changes by staff. Council still has to weigh in, but we would like to know hearing these proposed changes, the response. And generally, the HCD reviewers said they, quote, felt very good about the responses. And they were very favorable to the recommendations from staff. So all of those points indicate to us that if the recommended changes we're bringing you tonight are put into the housing element, all indications are that the HCD is set to tell Campbell we can certify the document. So with that, I do want to just also introduce, we have some consultant team with us tonight. You might recognize Jeff Barley, been with here for a long while out of M Group. You know, we have Asher Khan and Karen Rower also online, part of M Group and some consultant team. But with that, I'll give it to Mr. Rose to present the proposed changes.
Great, thank you. So on the screen are essentially the four areas of improvement which have been identified by HCD. Each of these requests generally relate to government code sections and requirements that require housing elements to adequately plan for housing and also address unmet housing needs. They also relate to removing governmental constraints and affirmatively furthering fair housing. So the first of these is the, in the report, we discussed these areas designated for emergency shelters. So HCD had a concern. Essentially, the only areas the city is locally designated to support emergency shelters are industrial in land use designation. So as a consideration, we're looking to potentially expand those areas of the city where emergency shelters would be permitted to include this area just slightly north of Santa Moss Expressway. Depicted there on the right. Additionally, the second point that HCD brings up is we have a target, we have a targeted program that among the requirements in it is that we aim to produce new permanent supportive housing within the community. Right now, that number that we, as a target, indicate is 50. Given the most recent point in time count numbers from Santa Clara County. HCD has advised us to, although it's an aspirational target, look at raising that, be closer to 50% of our point in time count figure. Which staff is in agreement with, based on our most recent point in time count, that'd be about 108 units that we'd be looking at producing through that program. Another point that HCD has raised is that our minimum parking requirements, or rather, I should say maximum, the slide's actually incorrect in that regard. There are maximum parking requirements which we impose on SROs and studios and one-bedroom units are too high. And the argument that's being positioned here is that when we're planning for housing, we need to provide for standards that can facilitate all the housing and all the unmet and planned for housing needs at all income levels. So if you were building a smaller, say, one-bedroom unit or a studio, or if you're building an SRO, the parking standards which we currently have in the books would be effectively a government constraint. And present almost a cost prohibitive, cost prohibitive standard to meet. In regard to parking standards, I would just candidly say about 50% of cities already covered by another government state law, which is AB 2097, which effectively eliminates all parking requirements of our housing opportunity site. That number is a little bit higher, 75% of the areas which we're planning for these units to count. So where we're talking about a parking reduction, in some areas where this production would technically apply, there would be no parking requirement regardless. But we are looking at a reduction for SROs to 0.5 or half a space per unit. And studio and one-bedroom units that are under 625 square feet to one space per unit. And finally, the last comment area for improvement, which HCD has provided his guidance on. Between the second and third draft of the housing element, the draft and our seminal staff had identified a desire to, a concern with one of our programs, there's program H-1M. Which provided guidance for how you could go about reducing the density of, the counted density, I guess you could say. So effectively for, we have density ranges and density requirements for individual properties assigned to the city and that if you produce we have density ranges and density requirements for individual properties assigned to the city, and that if you produce a small enough unit, you produce an SRO, or you do, say, a one-bedroom unit, the density would be cut in half, so you could produce twice as many units while still meeting the density requirements. Staff had expressed concerns with that for a variety of reasons, primarily dealing with that our general plan hadn't really contemplated that that intensity of use, the number that that number of units being produced in the city. And as a result, we'd struck it. HCD does believe that we should, had had advised that that policy, although they didn't have overt concerns about our inclusion, our removal of it, it was meeting a number of findings and program objectives that they felt more comfortable if we were to add it back. As a result, staff has recommended restoring a limited version of this program, which would resolve staff's prior concerns. And as a result of that program, we'd be in the future considering bringing back to council a program which would result in SROs and smaller studio and one-bedroom units to effectively count as half a unit. Happy to go to Danny in greater depth on any of these topics you see on the screen. That's really the 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 heart of the report and all the all the these requests are being made by ACD. And with that, all that we're looking for tonight is direction from council on these modifications of the draft housing element. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And thank you, Rob. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Stephen, could you please go back to the previous slide? So the staff proposed recommendations for, in particular, the HCD concerns one and three here are a little bit different than what HCD had suggested. So I I just want to clarify, and Rob, maybe you can answer this. Some something that that you said, were these specific versions of these changes discussed in that call with HCD, and that was what they responded favorably to? And and just to be specific, number one, of course, is suggesting that that we rezone some of the light industrial. We're not doing that in the in the recommended changes. And they asked for much lower 0.5 and and one parking requirements than what you're recommending.
Sure, I can speak to both. The HCD, and one thing, what we tried to do at this point, and in the staff report and the attachments, is cite actually the government code to make sure everything is rooted in the government code. And the government code and the HCD comment on on one was, there are some new laws that say, generally, if you're going to zone for emergency shelters, they just can't be in your industrial areas. They have to be in areas where people can live, and it's zoned for, and the quote they had is "human habitation." So initially, I don't, that that was their concern. We looked at some options. One option was trying to substantiate more in the area where they are allowed Dell by Dell. I guess Campbell does allow for some caretaker units. But to Stephen Rose's point, we have looked at this area to the north for a variety of reasons. It's much closer to services, it's close to the Safeway, it's close to light rail. Under new state laws, residential is allowed there, and so that was the approach we've recommended. We we did clearly disclose to HCD and showed them the the graphic you see on the screen that we are proposing this area. And again, they were fairly favorable to the to the approach on the call on Friday.
And and that meets the government code requirement?
Yes. I mean, when we get to this point, it's not all quantitative, as you, it's, you know, some of these are judgment calls. The government code speaks to making sure you have capacity with certain qualifications for these areas. But in staff's mind, it does, and again, we received favorable feedback on Friday from the HCD staff. On the second one, I'd say it's a bit of a compromise. I'd be honest and say the HCD staff was a bit adamant that we should reduce our parking standards. And I believe the quote was for all studios and one bedrooms down to one space per unit. I will say, the council went through a long deliberation, and it was a paradigm shift, in my opinion, on the reduction of parking standards under your direction last fall. The city has made leaps and bounds in changing its standards. And to Stephen Rose's point, recent state changes have preempted our parking requirements. I'd like to see them confirm, I believe at least 40% of our city now has no minimum parking requirements, and approximately 60 to 70% of our housing opportunity sites have no parking requirements. We think we should be a little bit more open and explain that in the document. I don't think that was as transparent. These are new state laws. So what you see on the screen was a little bit of a negotiation with HCD. It's not wholly accepting the recommendation. I will say, we plainly explained this was Campbell's position and the ramifications of the state laws. They accepted it. I didn't I didn't hear opposition to our approach.
Thank you. And and my question, and and please, you know, keep me within bounds if if we should follow up at a later time, but I'm curious, your your comment about the pro-housing designation, if if we're close to the deadline, what would be the time for potentially applying for that? If we decide to.
Yeah, I'll be honest, we haven't, our plan is so full, we have not dived into. I've heard secondhand of cities looking into it. My broad advice is walk before you can run, so get certification first. But the little I know about it, it's a new designation that came out last year under state law. And if we do apply for grant funding, it's sort of a fast pass or adds points to your application where you would be ranked much higher and have better access to state funds. But at the right time, and we can come back a little bit, but our plans are a bit full. We could provide back to the council the pros and cons of applying for that application.
I I I'd heard, the the examples I've heard of cities who've gone for it have been a little earlier, and and so yeah, let's just continue that that discussion. Great, that's all the questions I have.
Councilmember Fertado?
I have a various comments and questions and so on, maybe make some now and some a little later. But first, I just wanted to ask procedurally. So tonight, you're asking for our general input and kind of sense of where we think we should be going. Based on that, then your idea is to hopefully finalize most of the parts of the housing element. And if if you're able to do that, then am I to understand that it would come back to us for approval at the same time as we would potentially approve the general plan as well as the the standards, that the building standards that we need to adopt as well. So the idea would be various discussions, but then the final approval for submission would be all one one element all at once, I guess, is what you're saying, proposing.
That is correct.
Okay.
Let me just clarify, if I if I can, just to nuance that what I heard you say is the final submission. This this is our final submission. If the council authorizes us to make this, if they certify us, we still have to go through the process of adoption, but that adoption will go back to HCD for reapproval. They'll certify.
Yeah, I mean, the procedural.
Just to make sure it was clear on the process, and I I heard that nuance to the question.
Right, and I can go through the grand other steps. So the next actual step staff would take for council's direction would be to revise the text in the document. Required per state code to publish it on our website, notify stakeholders for seven days. We would officially resubmit the document to HCD. Our plan is to do that in the next two weeks. And HCD would then give us a letter back. This was their commitment, not another 60 days, but within a week to say, we've we reviewed your revised document. This housing element, as presented by Campbell, can be certified by the state. Once you adopt the document, send the document back to us, and we will certify it. And after that, all the the steps you mentioned, Councilmember Fertado, would be taken by council in late in late March.
Okay, but we're not taking any official action tonight, right? That, I mean, you're saying that.
That you're correct, you're not taking an official action tonight.
Oh, okay.
But once you've submitted this, and they give you a letter saying that they will certify it as submitted, you will still have to do the final adoption. If that final adoption isn't substantially what you submitted before, you'd probably start that process all over again. Just to make sure that was clear.
Changes my comments a little bit, but so let me kind of go through a few more things, then. So I know many people have been working on this for a long time and hoping to ultimately, you know, come to some conclusion in the end and so on. A couple more procedural things. I realize that, in a sense, this is a rather technical document, and it's for the benefit of staff and interpretations and speaking to people who ask you questions and interpreting, you know, our city plan. It's for the purpose of developers and so on. Many of the people who will read this for the technical aspects are themselves basically experts and and need that kind of documentation. But I also think it should be a document that people can commonly read and get a basic, general understanding of of everything. And so for that reason, I would offer the following suggestions.
This is a question.
Yes, well, okay. So I I would pose the following, then, that we have, it it seems to me that it would be appropriate to have a section on definitions and acronyms, so that that could be, you know, further defined. And so, for example, I do have a question about emergency shelters. I assume there are particular standards that we would have to meet that sort of meet some, quote, official definition of an emergency shelter for how long people can reside there, or who would kind of like provide maintenance and how would other support services be provided and so on? Does that level of detail need to, is that already defined, or or does that, do we have to specify that a little more? I mean, it seems like we should at least define that a little more, some elements of that.
So I can speak to that briefly. So the the emergency shelter area of our city, it's actually already included in our existing housing element, the one we've already had on the books. So this program is looking to expand that. As far as what it's defined as and where it resides, it's actually already codified. We had previous housing element policy language. It said, effectively, to update the municipal code. It now lives in 2136 or Special Uses Section. That we have a whole list of requirements that need to be met. There's program requirements and directional requirements associated with that as well, which is already now part of our municipal code and would be relied upon as this area is expanded as well.
Okay, thank you. And another comment, near the end of this document, there is a numeric labeling of various comments. It's titled Response to HCD Comments Matrix. And again, that is a very technical enumeration of different policies and requirements. I'm wondering to sort of make that clearer, besides the initial statement that sort of identifies paragraph and line and reference to certain laws and so on, if you can also put a sentence or two that actually explains in more common language what that really means. I mean, I can go through and read any one of these, but to me, that doesn't mean a whole lot. I can't define it in my mind at what you're getting at. I suspect, or I assume, I hope, or whatever, that others might feel the same way, but would like to understand the basic elements identified there. And I'm wondering if you can, in your final document, expand that a little bit, just to clarify what all of those mean in a practical way.
Yeah, we can do that. I'll say broadly speaking, a lot of what you're seeing is staff bandwidth issues. So we are, Mr. Rose, you're supposed to dedicate quarter of his time to housing, a quarter of his time to the general plan, a quarter of time to planning. And we're at the point where we're preparing the objective standards and the general plan document and the housing element. And it's, it, you know, providing perfection of all these documents and understanding mean to translate, we are starting to hit some bandwidth issues, but we do completely hear what you're saying. This was something we had talked about as a guide to council to break down the findings and the terminology in a way that's understandable. One thing we do tend to do is post-adoption, if the council agrees, is is there are, there's some money left in the budget, is to put a little bit more into the document in form, not substance. The substance remained the same, but to make the document a bit more accessible to the reading public in summarizing the key terms and presenting it graphically in a way that people can access and read. But a lot of what your comments and reading are is, is, I'd say plainly, we're racing to the finish line at this point, and a few of the things around the details and the edges just aren't getting polished.
Yeah, just real quickly, just add one more, one more expanded comment on that. That matrix that you're seeing, it's primarily a, it's a tool that we're using for these deliberative discussions with HCD staff. That particular matrix will not find its way into the final housing element, because at that point, hopefully, we'll have resolved HCD's feedback and those comments and that matrix. So that particular exhibit, well, taken as it is, it's it's a, it's a tool that we're using through these deliberative discussions. We're trying to disclose to council other things which we're looking at doing. But again, that the the totality of that document, that particular sheet will be not included, and I understand the confusion that it could currently present.
Okay, thank you. So that's all the comments I'll make right now until we kind of have more full discussion after everyone else speaks.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yes, regarding the map for the emergency homeless shelters, you've picked up economy lumber. Has there been any consideration to the loss of our sales tax of if that whole property could be rebuilt as a homeless shelter? And before you answer, let me just clearly state, I totally support having a homeless shelter. Been on this bandwagon for a while, so it's not that I'm saying I don't want a homeless shelter, but I'm just curious what evaluation has been made of how that affects our sales tax base, because economy lumber has to be making a major contribution.
And I'd just candidly say that that is part of the reason why we're bringing the map before you tonight. We can make amendments to it. I'll say the logical reason why we define the limits of it where it is was to kind of encapsulate an area which all have the same general plan, land use designation. And as, you know, Director Eastwood was mentioning earlier, all of these areas which are included within that zone are in proximity to public transit and a grocery store. We could certainly amend the limits of that line, I I think, as part of this process. I do know that is when we're being deliberate about our housing element opportunity site selection process earlier, much earlier in this process, we had been using criteria such as, if you're a top 10 sales tax generator, top 50, I think we ended up amending it, that those sites would be, have have been excluded. I I will say it also speak to the the likelihood that any individual site would dispose an existing tenant as far as a permitted use would go. I I don't know if a an emergency shelter would necessarily pick the economy lumber site of the sites available within this area, even if we do designate it as a way of going about its development process, larger, and I will, I would say there are more accessible sites which are a little bit more vacant that might be prioritized instead in that in that same area. So.
So the assessment of the top 10 sales, we didn't put that in this mix right now?
Not in this particular exhibit. We hadn't considered that. In the preceding process where we were going through the housing opportunity site selection process, economy lumber had been removed based on that criteria. So if you were to apply the same logic to this expanded map, you could certainly have that site removed.
Okay. And then regarding the microunit production, it says SROs and smaller studio, one-bedroom to count as half of a unit. So doesn't that help, like, make it a negative? Because if we're trying to get a count for the housing, and now we're only getting to count that unit as a half.
It's half the unit for density calculation purposes, so you're effectively doubling the number of units which would otherwise be allowable. So it wouldn't have the effect from a regional, so that you had the regional housing needs allocation. That just accounts for the number of units that are issued or produced or final, depending on which table you're looking at. We're also working on that. That's going to be another table that you'll have, I think, next month. But as far as the this, the the calculation, you'd still get a full credit even if it's calculated as half for density purposes.
Okay, I guess I didn't get that. It's one is for density and one is the RENA number.
Correct.
So we still get a full count for RENA. Okay, and then, let me think, what was the other one? I can't remember the question. Oh, actually, maybe this is for Rob, the question. Or maybe Bill first. How much beyond the four topics on this list can we discuss the housing element? Open for any conversation?
You can delve into any any matter involving the housing element.
Okay, great. So now I'm going to ask Rob, hopefully Rob or Stephen. During the previous fall, the council authorized 4,900 units as part of the mapping and the exercise moving forward. But the original RENA number was, what, 2,900, and we were to have a 30% cushion? So it was getting to 3,200. So there's 1,700 designated units beyond what I would say our minimum RENA, this 3,200. Regarding that 1,700, how can can they be reused in the next housing cycle? Or not?
Yes. If they're not developed, they can roll over to the next housing cycle.
And we aren't going to be penalized in any way for having them not be built?
No. There is a procedural requirement. If you continue to roll over units, I think, two cycles. There's an allowance in state law, but the housing, a housing proposal that proposes more than 20% affordable on a site that has been rolled over twice would be, have to be processed ministerially. would be, have to be processed ministerially. Other than that, there's, there's no penalty.
Okay, so it's not restricting us from adding that if we're not going to probably build four thousand nine hundred. Hopefully we will build the three thousand two hundred, but so that seventeen hundred is not penalizing in any way? It's not going to deter later the next housing cycle, anything like that?
No, yeah, the one, and this was presented in the November twenty-ninth staff report to council. I remember pros and cons of the high inventory. The, the two cons staff only identified was one, the one I just mentioned. If they continue to roll over the allowance of housing by right in those instances. And two, generally, once you zone a site for housing, it is very difficult to rezone it back to commercial or industrial. Those are the only two areas that the council would consider. And there, beyond that, there's no penalties that staff has identified.
So that extra, the extra seventeen hundred homes by designating them as housing now, they cannot go back to commercial? So if a commercial business is there, they can't tear it down and build a new commercial building? They'd have to go to housing?
If, well, we, so I can have Stephen speak to this. Most of our housing sites are designated mixed use, which allow most both commercial and residential. And Stephen can speak to this more. Commercial is allowed, and if it's commercial today, that those would continue. The absolute, the challenge would be if the city stepped back, looked at a housing site and said, for example, we really need to designate that industrial or purely commercial with no housing. Per state law, there's a no net loss provision. If you decrease your housing inventory by rezoning housing sites, you have to increase your capacity elsewhere. So if the council was to cross that bridge in the future, again, a housing site rezoned to commercial industrial, you would have to, have to pick an equitable site that's commercial or industrial and rezone it to housing.
For this additional seventeen hundred units?
No, again, I don't want to keep, I mean, this is, this is all theory. At this point, there is no penalty to have an additional seventeen hundred units zoned for housing.
But that precludes those later from being just commercial?
There are restrictions on the city in the future rezoning it to not allow housing on those sites.
But can the developer take a existing commercial that is now shown as multi, what do you call it, zoning, housing, commercial? Can they rebuild with just commercial?
Stephen to actually speak to that question.
So if I heard the question correctly, these are for housing opportunity sites, could they redevelop as a housing exclusively project?
And no housing?
No housing, yeah. That, some sites that would be, actually all of the sites which we have in mixed use land use designation, that is, that is and will continue to be the case.
So they have to have housing as a mixed use?
They do not.
Okay, I guess I'm not, I don't know if it's too late at night. Okay, I think I've asked my question.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez, do you have questions or just comments?
Yeah, maybe just a comment, like I thought that was a good point about bringing up economy lumber and then like having a loss like that to the community. Like I think that we should definitely be thinking very much about not just the taxes that come in. Of course, that's important. And yes, I'm a huge advocate, I'd like to state that too, of making sure that we do have more shelters. It's my understanding that homelessness right here in Campbell, believe it or not, has gone up something around one hundred seventy percent over the last few years. So we're in definite need of that. Oh, I just wanted to make more of a statement, yeah, comment, or can I say like about the, not just the loss of taxes, but I feel like Campbell's one of those last communities that really still has services available, like in regard, so like, oh, I can go to the local lumber store. I do have a local auto shop, you know, that I can go to in my own community, you know? And like, I think that's something that we can take a lot of pride in. And I don't want to see that go away just to meet, you know, like housing needs. I think there, there should be some kind of, you know, compromise or, you know, I think we could do both, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez, do you have another question?
I do have a question, but I know you haven't gone.
Yeah, I just have one question related to the number two, the permanent supportive housing. So if the hundred and eight units is an aspirational goal and we don't meet that goal, what are their consequences? What will happen?
In all likelihood, what would probably happen is the HCD does plan on having check-ins on occasion, even during the housing element, that the planning period. They'd probably look for ways that we could amend that particular program or tweak it to try to make it more effective in the future. So it does actually achieve that, that target. That said, I'll also indicate that it, the way that we pegged it, and I think we mentioned this in the report as well, is it's to the point in time count, so as it's adjusted, it's adjusted up or adjusted down. But that's, and we, it's very possible that our current point in time count's artificially high.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, my question is for, for our city attorney. And just out of curiosity, I seem to recall this coming up before at some point. Do you have any restrictions on considering specific sales tax for a location? Or am I misremembering a previous conversation?
Not recalling, at least, I, maybe I'm not understanding the context. I'm not recalling any discussion about prohibiting discussion about sales tax impacts.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I remember something on the topic coming up at some point, but I just want to make sure we weren't stretching in areas we weren't allowed to cover, but it sounds like that, that's not the case, which is good.
I'm not aware of any reason that you can't consider sales tax impacts.
Okay, anything else?
I just wanted to clarify with the comments with the lumber yard. We can certainly look at, as was said, parcelling them out of this extension that's proposed. And that's easy to do, we can do that. I do want to clarify that my understanding is that the allowed use is in addition to the uses that are already permitted in that zone. It would not make the existing uses illegal or run them out or get rid of them. What would have to happen is that property owner would have to sell to develop it. When the parcel would have to become available, someone couldn't just come in and kick eighty-four lumber out. They would obviously continue to exist as long as it was a viable business, I think, with the zoning that's being proposed. However, with that being said, to be extra conservative and sure that will never happen, we can certainly remove it from the map. I think that's probably the better approach.
All right, thank you both.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, so on the chart, responses to HCD matrix on the last page, the item fifteen and I think it's sixteen talks about estimated goal of facilitating up to ten matches per year to share households. Do we have the staff capacity right now to be dealing with programs like this that they're proposing? I mean, that's going to take some coordination of trying to figure out who can share houses. I mean, it's a lofty goal, I like the idea, but are we going to be adding staff? I think you had mentioned at one point a new housing person in the department.
Yes, and just to be clear, you and I didn't converse ahead of this because at some point we will come back to you and talk about staffing needs. So there is, the council might remember, we had hired an outside auditor to come in and audit Campbell's housing program and make program recommendations on staffing and more fiscal sustainability. We don't have a draft findings on our audit. We are waiting to bring that to council until after the housing element adoption, the option that you would adopt the housing element with the programs and policies. And then the audit that comes in that recommends the staffing that go with it would come with it. I will say the preliminary recommendations we're seeing in that audit does recommend the city hire a housing manager full-time to oversee this program. So I bothered to answer your question, we don't, do not have the staffing to manage many of the programs in the housing element.
If we brought on that housing person, would that put under the house keys combined in that? Or would we still have that consultant?
We still would, yeah. That, the need to manage the BMR program would continue on going probably separately as a contract. This would be a full-time equivalent staffed position in the city that would oversee the house keys contract and oversee all the programs you have before you're in the housing element.
Great, thanks. Okay, any other questions before I open it to the public? Okay, anyone in the public wishing to speak? If you could come forward and state your name, please?
Good evening, my name is Alvaro Luz, and I'm with the local four five company. Michael, good evening, my name is Alvaro Luz, I'm a member of the local four five company. And I'm here today to, to see that it's great that, that we had many changes to the housing element. But we also have to think about the people that are going to build those projects. Knowing the housing element, I haven't seen anything about labor. Who's going to build them? Are we going to, are we going to include area standards? Are we going to include local hire, apprenticeship programs, healthcare benefits? I didn't see none on the paperwork, so, and it's important for us as carpenters, it actually helps us, help us be able to stay on the city that we live in and work locally. Myself, I've been a carpenter for ten years. And I had commute for two hours, three hours a day. Going from, from where I'm from all the way to San Francisco, all the way to Sacramento. It's, it's important for us to make, 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 make those changes into the housing element. Make, make the, make us count in there. It just, it helps a lot. There's a lot of, there's two cities in the, in the upper Bay area that actually have implemented area labor standards, which is San Mateo and, and Meadow Park. And those cities have implemented the, the effort to provide livable wages, healthcare, apprenticeship programs and local hire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Again, Rajapalila, one, two, one, six, West Hasson Avenue. I want to start with thanking Rob and Stephen for all the, lots of time last year. In view of the time, I won't extend my applauses more. Coming quickly into the, you know, the emergency shelter stuff. For a long while, I have been asking that whole area is like very underused. If any of, one of you go there, you know, half of the space is actually put up signs for like for rental or lease kind of thing. There is a new building that was approved a couple of years ago, the Creek View, hundred and fifty thousand square feet. That building is right now under construction. So that is a great area actually to be rezoned and redesignated for housing. You know, the council should consider doing that. And the other thing is for parking, a lot of people have been asking to reduce parking. City staff has done, like have been, you know, doing their best to convey that. But there was a lot of resistance from the city council. I mean, sorry to say this, but city council was the one who was trying to push unfortunately for higher counseling, higher, sorry, parking limits, even though the state is trying to practically eliminate them, saying, hey, this is not feasible. This is not the right thing to do. But our city council have been going in the right opposite direction and it's biting us back. I have attended a lot of HCD meetings, I have been in communication with some of the HCD staff, you know, for the last few months. Also, anywhere they go, that's what they are saying, eliminate parking, reduce parking, increase, increase like the bike or public transport mode and whatnot. So I want to request, I mean, I, I don't know, like even going at one point, point five on one and putting those square feet stuff, it's a gamble we are taking. That's not what the HCD has already agreed to. This is a gamble we are trying to, you know, like Rob said, we are trying to do a negotiation there, right? What effectively we are saying is we don't encourage families, like with kids, like four hundred square feet, six hundred square feet. It's not feasible for people with kids to live there. So I'm not even sure if, you know, this will be accepted and we will, you know, if the builder's remedy will kick in and whatnot. The last thing quickly, I want to get an understanding is I have a question on the H one M program where it says racially concentrated areas of affluence. So I'm a little confused by what that means, either the staff or someone who can clarify it would say, you know, affirmatively furthering fair housing by providing for the creation of additional low income housing units within racially concentrated areas of affluence. So racially concentrated and affluence, I'm a little confused out there, so I just wanted to get some clarification, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? And do we have anybody online? Okay, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to council for a discussion and/or a motion. Councilmember Lopez?
Thanks so much. Really appreciate the thoughtful comments, appreciate staff's work. I just want to set some context for where we are. We've come a really long way in this. I go around telling people that Campbell can put our housing element up against anyone else in the region. And it's great to hear HCD agreeing with that and even encouraging us to seek a pro housing designation, something that would really help us get the resources, which are going to be very competitive in areas that we really are going to need to achieve this program. So huge kudos to the staff. At the same time, we're at a really critical stage in this process. Our last commenter, Raj, I appreciate, mentioned briefly the builder's remedy. That actually, we had some discussion about this last time that came up. That actually kicked in February first, and what that means is that we technically, understanding this is a huge process, there are still, I fully support the process we've done and where staff has brought us. By, by missing the January thirty-first deadline, we've already lost a degree of local control. Los Altos Hills just had their first project filed, I think, today or earlier this week. And so people can start proposing projects that, that we, we lose the right to give input on if we don't certify this document in time. So I think we're so close to the finish line. Clearly, the comments from HCD indicate that they agree. So I think we really need to get this right. I think the staff recommendations are all absolutely in the right direction. There's been certainly thoughtful and great points raised, so I'm open to considering. But I think, you know, absolutely support getting this done to get that submitted and get our element certified by the date that HCD has, has given us in late February. Because we can't just gamble and risk complete loss of local control. If we go back to the drawing board and delay, I don't think any of us want to see that. And it's happening, Los Altos Hills just had the first one in our region and I suspect it won't be the last. So like I said, I think these are all really great suggestions. And I'm really glad to hear of that second conversation with HCD specifically discussing these. Like Raj, I had some concerns, particularly on points one and three, that we're a little bit far from what HCD has suggested. But given the answers to my questions and the feedback, the preliminary feedback that HCD has given, I'm willing to go with, with the staff recommendations, understanding that it's not necessarily as far as HCD has asked, but definitely going in the right direction. I think it'd really help to improve what we're doing for our residents here and then the quality of our housing proposal. So really support the work that, that staff has done here. Thank you, Jeff, Stephen, Rob, everyone who's worked really hard on this for a very long time to get us to the finish line. Very glad to be where we are, thank you.
Councilmember Fertado?
Yes, I just wanted to return once again briefly to the two speakers that just spoke. Does staff have any comments about those particular comments? If I remember the gentleman before the last one, I think he was talking about certain wage standards, benefit standards for potential workers who would be constructing. Do we have any, any say so or control or input into that?
What I'd candidly say, well, in terms of our existing housing programs, we do have some programs which help support local workers. And that is like our inclusionary housing ordinance does have a ranking, a priority system for people who either, either live or work in the city being prioritized for below market rate housing in our community over people who live outside of our community, for example. Some of the comments which are raised go well beyond that scope, like where you're talking about support like, like fair wages and those types of issues. I will say, state law and among those like SB six and AB twenty-eleven, they do include for people choosing to do, use exercisers laws, requirements that they provide a fair wage and they meet certain local standards for payment of, or of employment standards. The second comment, and so is the first, I think, that which we had heard was about the labor issues, so to speak. The second was on the areas of racial, racially affluent areas. So the city has census tracts and within the census So the city has a census tracts and within those census tracts, we have areas which have been identified as uh more affluent than others and racially concentrated areas of affluence. So this, the the particular program and what HCD was telling us was on the micro unit production of the small units. By effectively allowing for more units in areas where we designated as, say, housing or particularly our housing opportunity sites, you are indirectly resulting in more uh opportunity for more housing production in those areas of uh that are racially concentrated and affluent. So therefore, you're helping meet uh program objectives related to affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Okay, thank you. I have a few more comments. Um I just wanted to get back to a few of the issues that we had discussed. First of all, with respect to uh on page, packet page sixty six, we talk a little bit about the uh number of unhoused people, um unsheltered people who now reside in Campbell. It, when we use the the terminology there that says that the city, um the city of Campbell had a one hundred and ninety one percent increase in homeless. It it seems like using a percent like that sort of doesn't paint the true picture. It sounds like an astronomical number. But when you look at the actual numbers, it uh goes from uh seventy four to two sixteen, so it's a little more than doubled. Um the other point is, I'm wondering if in twenty nineteen, for example, the ways in which unsheltered people were counted um were different from the standards that were used more recently, say in twenty twenty two, where we we may have had a a more robust um detailed way of counting. So in other words, we counted more people than possibly were there and just not counted um by the standards that were used in twenty nineteen. So it it may be, I'm speculating, of course, that, well, then a number of unsheltered did increase. It's not as dramatic as it seems when you look at these numbers just based on the counting methods. I don't know if you have any input in that, prob- maybe not, but uh it's just a comment on that.
I I I could take this. Rob can jump in uh just for purposes of uh saving him from having to get up to the podium. Um we're well aware that this homeless uh unhoused count is not an exact science, um clearly. And there's a lot of uh questions about the methods in which they allocated these to the city. Um that goes without saying. Um and we also are aware that this count will continue to be redone over time. And that over time, it probably paints a clearer picture than any one count. Um and so we're trying to align that uh in the policy with the most recent count, not necessarily the um the two thousand twenty two count. It may be the future counts that we're basing this program out, that kind of balance that out for us.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Um secondly, I just wanted to also um second what my colleagues have said regarding um the fact that we place importance in providing for unsheltered um housing and that it's an important element. Going along with that, a couple of comments, I feel that it's important that we, we do provide appropriate locations and that we don't try to, you know, hide people uh in areas that uh are not visible or anything. I I don't, I don't believe that's our policy, but I just wanted to state that I I think it's important that we have appropriate places where they have access to public transportation uh as uh as noted already in in just the location and uh and support services and things like that. The other thing I worry about is, I've always worried about in our two industrial areas, uh which are the McGlinsey Lane and the Dell areas, uh about authorizing housing in those areas because um uh it it's a a lot of problems in terms of uh noise, uh construction work, uh the nature of it and uh and not a good place with a a lot of trucks and so on going by to raise children and what have you. So I I just think we still have to keep that in mind as well. Finally, um getting back to a comment that uh council member Landry made earlier, um it's good to know that in the final analysis, it's everybody's understanding that while uh we have, we are thinking of planning for a great deal more housing units than were assigned by RENA. In the final analysis, a few years from now, we are only held to the RENA standards um and not sort of look back at a higher standard just because we planned for it. And I also would hate to plan for a lot of extra housing and then somehow have some of those areas disqualified in the future because um the the appropriate numbers, you know, did not uh pan forth or pan out that uh sites were chosen. Of course, everybody knows we don't build housing, we don't own the property. It is a negotiation between someone who wants to sell and a developer who wants to develop. And we can encourage it and provide various bonuses and things like that. Um but um I I think we do have to push back and I just think a statement indicating that uh you know, the council recognizes that uh while we're gonna make every effort to do as much as we can, uh we are held to the RENA standard only, uh because I do worry sometimes that housing and community development of the state, quite frankly, uh takes uh la- takes liaison with their quote rulings and decisions beyond their legislative authority. And um I think it's appropriate at certain times to push back on them. Uh so uh those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmembers? Vice Mayor Landry?
Yes, thank you. Um so I'll start with the housing map. Um I think we need to reconsider the economy lumber part of it. It's the little tail. It still leaves quite a lot of acreage in there with quite a lot of units. But I'm looking at our sales tax base. We need money to come in uh so that we can afford to provide our services that we do to the community. So I don't know if that has to be a vote by council, but I I think that parcel should be excluded uh just because of the sales tax. And then um I I, before I forget, I want to thank you guys. This has been a tremendous amount of work and it's been a very tight schedule. Uh I know you guys are working very diligently to get all this done. And I totally appreciate that. We 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 barely missed the deadline, but we're close enough. And I I know there's this builder's remedy, but I don't know that we're gonna have anybody come in tomorrow and say, you know, build, build, build. Um so I do understand that that's kind of the penalty. Um I did want to address the comment that the gentleman made about the apprentice programs and the local hires. Um it's good to know that there is some things in, I I forget what document or what you cited. But um we, unless we contribute money financially to a development of a project, we can't dictate prevailing wage or like an apprentice. We can certainly promote that and say, we want you to do that, but it limits us when it's a totally private developer. It really limits our ability to state that, but we could have it as saying, we really strongly suggest that you do this. Um so I did hear your comments um uh regarding the parking, Raj. It's, to me, it's quite a challenge. Our transit system has no legal nexus between our housing and our transit. VTA at any point can change a bus line or eliminate a bus line. And so th- there is no legal nexus. So by saying, oh, there's a public bus or a public transportation, that does not ne- mean that it's going to be there in three to five years. And that's been my ongoing concern. And also, a a lot of the comments about get out of your car has to do with the the fuel and the carbon emissions. But what if we all go electric? Are you still saying we can't have a car because we went electric? Um and that my other, I I've used the story constantly about a poor woman who is homeless, living in her car, who finally gets an apartment, and now you tell her she can't have her car anymore, and I object to that. Um so I think we need to be realistic. The state is dictating a lot of this. It's out of our control. Um but I I have my car and you're telling me they can't have their car. I I I feel sad for those people that you're telling them, I'll give you a house, but you can't have a car because there's not gonna be a parking space. So that's been my perspective of where I come from about the parking is I have my car, but everybody else should still have the ability to have a car if they also get a low income unit. I think it's nice that we could be on the pro housing city. Uh that would be a wonderful designation because then that would give us better standing to get grants. And then we could look at things like the apprentice and local hire programs. Um but I am concerned about this forty nine hundred unit designation and what that is way above the designated RENA number. And I just want to make sure that we're not being penalized in the future that by designating all of these places as housing, that we are gonna be stuck with that forever. And like especially going into the next RENA cycle, that we can reuse those. You reassured me that we can. But I'm still a little confused about if we designate a parcel right now to include housing, commercial, retail, hotel, whatever, and they don't want to put in housing, that that precludes that that then means that site does have to have housing. And I think that can stymie some of the development of the city. So this extra number, I I did not vote for the forty nine hundred mostly because of my fear of what that does to us. And I don't want HCD to come back and say, well, you said you're gonna build forty nine hundred homes and you only built three thousand. You know, we want to be judged against the RENA number and we already had given a cushion of the thirty percent. So that's been my land longstanding concern about such a high number. Um but I I'm being reassured by staff that my issues are not, you know, not going to be issues in the future. So I, other than taking out the um economy lumber, I support all the other um recommendations in there. And I'll look forward to having the, you come back uh during our next budget air time about this position and what that really means to us as a city, because I don't see how we're gonna manage these programs that they're proposing without additional staff.
Councilmembers? Scazzola, do you have any comments?
Okay. I just have a couple. Um I um want to thank staff for the work that they've done. And um we're, as Rob said, we're close to the finish line and hopefully this will be it. I appreciate the give and take back with HCD trying to, you know, come to a um reasonable el- um housing element. Uh I want to speak a little bit to the parking. I know we have had a lot of discussion about parking limits and requirements. And um I I think what's being proposed is a fair and conservative um approach. The reality of it is that we don't have a robust transportation system in this that serves our community. And um the reality is that people are not gonna give up their cars. Um it probably in my lifetime and probably beyond that. So I I think it's um a reasonable approach and a conservative approach and and realistic. So I think I I would support the recommendation. And then the final um comment I have is on the um economy lumber um business. I think that should be excluded from the um the designated area. And that's my only comments. So with that, uh oh, sorry, Councilmember Lopez?
No, thank you. Thanks so much. People raised such good points. Um I just just want to come back to a few. Um I'm okay also with taking off the economy lumber side. I I think the concerns raised are are reasonable. Um I appreciate staff's responses to some of the other concerns and thoughts that have been brought up. Um I did want to say, I I I I really appreciate um A- Albert, I think, the first gentleman who who spoke. Um and those concerns are are really important. Um I I'm not sure if if, given where we are with the housing element, if if that is the legal mechanism that that could address some of those concerns. But I I would support continuing conversation uh about how to bring back um potentially some of those ideas or or just having more of a discuss- discussion um around what we can can and can't do because those are um definitely incredibly important to uh quality of life for for our residents. And and lastly, I just want to say, I hear the the concerns about the transit and the bus lines, but I've only been on VTA for one month. So you gotta give me a couple more at least. Uh but definitely uh appreciate those concerns.
Okay, Councilmember Scazzola?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh it sounds like I'm I'm hearing a lot of comments regarding like the states mandating these things and uh, you know, I am concerned. It sounds like there's a concern in the room of like if we don't adopt soon, then, you know, we're just gonna be forced, like the issue's gonna be forced and we're gonna lose our decisive ability, which means that the people who live here, they can't talk to us and we can't speak on their behalf. And I don't like the sound of that. So uh it sounds to me like the quicker we get this approved, the better. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay, great. No, the public um testimony is closed. But thank you. So um Director Eastwood, um gee, the recommended action is to provide direction to the, to to you, to your staff um on the four uh issues or four areas in question. Do you have enough direction um from what you've heard? Or would you like a motion? Would you like us to um vote on each?
Emotion?
I think we've heard, yeah, I'll just read back. We we heard uh supportive staff's recommendation with the minor amendment to exclude economy lumber from the uh zone discussed. And if that's uh council consensus, uh we will move forward.
Thank you.
Great. What a relief. Okay, we'll now move to council committee reports and um would anyone like to start? Councilmember Fertado?
Uh I'll start. Um attended the um was would what was the first meeting of the year and my first meeting for the West Valley Clean Water Authority. Um the Clean Water Authority is the agency that is responsible for managing um stormwater and um who can discharge into stormwater and things of that nature. Uh it's a good meeting, uh good overview. Um I think it's a very well-run organization. And um one of the things that we are going to do, um we are going to go ahead with a um a public opinion poll, just to kind of um get some ideas on uh in terms of costs and how much the public is willing to potentially pay for the increased requirements that we have for stormwater. It it is definitely true that um we take in a lot money, not just our city, but the other cities too, than um than the stormwater maintenance requires or the the costs are higher than the incomes, is what I'm trying to say. So we're gonna be doing that survey, which will provide us a basis to decide whether we should go further or not in that area. And then um I'm gonna also serve as the vice chair of this um authority for this coming year. And then um also had a meeting of the uh Solid Waste Management Authority, um which is the uh basically the the new contracts for picking up recyclables, uh disposables and then things of that nature. The previous board approved a new contract with the same organization. Um that will actually go into effect in twenty twenty four. There will be some changes. And the management authority that uh the board has hired to do the management will um work with the company to kind of roll out a a public information campaign with new regulations and rules uh that the state has imposed, but also some uh changes in services, hopefully for the better, that um uh we will realize in our uh for city authority. And then uh one other element, um there are, as you know, for the organic materials, there is a composting requirement. And um we're supposed to not only compost, but also uh utilize a lot of the compost. Our city has already made a commitment to utilize some of the composted materials, uh which is good. Uh but we also um approved an agreement with an a company called Agarman that actually handles all the compost and provides appropriate, I'll say, recycling or use of it that meets the legal requirements because we would sort of drown ourselves in all the compost that i- if we had to dispose of it or utilize it all within our, only our force of the area. So interesting um work and that's it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Okay, didn't know what order you wanted to go in.
I'm just gonna go this way.
Okay, um so I attended the Santa Clara Valley Water, I guess they're called Valley Water now, uh Water Commission meeting last week. And we got a water update and we're looking good so far this year. It's good to know. Um they are looking at still increasing some of the water rates. There was some discussion about that. And also um Valley Water would like cities to adopt, and I I'm gonna say the M Wendo, Brian. M W E N D O, Model Water Efficient New Development Ordinance, Rob. Uh so far, no city has uh adopted this uh recommended ordinance. And it takes, uh goes beyond the water efficient, the wellow that the state has, and it goes into the and it takes uh goes beyond the water efficient, the well-o that the state has, and it goes into the basically building new development and having a standard of what water efficiency is. And I would be very happy to say that we were the first city to adopt this ordinance, so if we can look at that. Um there also is now a stamp state mandate that is a prohibition of non-functional C two, Roman numeral two turf, and I'm asking for a clarification of what that means regarding the city because we have a lot of non-functional turf areas like out here in City Hall. And you guys all know how I don't like that, but this is something that we need to be looking into is are we complying with this provision of non-functional? Do we fall into that category? Uh Saturday, Elliot and I attended the Library JPA Forum. Uh it was very well attended. Uh there was a really good uh strategic plan overview, strategic plan update. Uh got to meet a lot of nice new people, um had some round robin conversations, so that went really well. And again, Elliot and I today attended the Education Committee, uh very well attended. Um we were um discussed the future topics for the following year of what we can do. We have Parks and Rec Library and I think four districts attended Campbell Union. Uh with um board members and Shelley, the superintendent, we had the Westmont School and I forget what the other one was, but very well attended. And what we've come up with for our work plan for this next year is the first one to have staff come to our next education committee and talk about housing. And they're concerned of what the school's awareness is um regarding how this housing is going to impact schools and attendance. The second topic is mental health, which uh Serge, you know, I had worked on last year and uh coordinating what the library is doing, what Parks and Rec doing, and us and importantly, what the youth commission is doing, and then what else we as a city could do regarding that. And then the third topic area for this year is safe routes to school and crossing guards. And there was quite a good conversation about why aren't there more crossing guards and how much money and really what it came down to is the availability of people that qualify to become crossing guards. Uh so that's our three topics that uh we want to discuss and um I want to just stay unfortunately uh by being out of town and the conference, I missed the deadline for the Recycling and Waste Reduction Committee to be reappointed, so I will not be on that this term.
Great. Councilmembers Kuzola?
Yeah, just uh building on what uh Councilmember Landry was talking about. Uh so the Library District Forum, that was really cool and and I I I really liked uh that they they had these like breakaway sessions where they encouraged us to, you know, talk to each other about, you know, like, oh, they had a question, a genuine question, and this particular one was uh in regards to collecting patron input, AKA surveys from you know, people, the public coming into the library. And so uh the gentleman I was having a discussion with, we uh we came up with some what we thought were pretty great ideas. We presented them. They're they're uh the feedback was great and uh it just seemed like a really, it was great. I loved it. It was a very interactive uh thing that we did. Also, I can say that the bookmobiles, you know, I've always loved bookmobiles, but I learned some really cool specific things about the Santa Clara County bookmobiles is that uh they go all the way over the mountain, you know, Mount Hamilton, down into the valley to get to some underserved communities. So that's amazing to me. Uh also to farmworker communities uh further down south. Um and like uh elderly, less mobile people, you know, they they make specific visits for that too. So they're just really trying to get you know, books into the hands of everyone and I I thought that was amazing. Um and then I'd I'll I'll just add to the uh Education Committee that I I'm excited about the future and I for one, I I expressed it in the meeting. Uh I'm really a huge advocate for the the safety, you know, so I'm very excited about uh working on that and ha- having more crossing guards, having more safety features all around town to make sure that you know, especially our kids can cross the walkways uh without any harm. And uh that'll just, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, thank you much and and really appreciate hearing the the updates from all the things um uh others are are involved in. I I find this really valuable. Um I I attended uh our our first meeting of the year for the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. It was mostly housekeeping, but uh one of the items was that or uh follow-up items, I guess, coming up out of that was um finalizing the committees. Um and I was appointed vice chair of the Mobile Sources um Impacts uh Committee, so so looking forward to that, um really important body for for uh managing pollution. Um I had a couple of events for the League of Cities Peninsula Division, um of which I'm on the executive board. Um we had a housing policy committee, um that is statewide for for the league, and I'm one of two representatives um for the Peninsula Division, um the the only one representing Santa Clara County. Um and we had a very um long and substantive discussion and briefing on the Our Neighborhood Voices Proposed Ballot Initiative. Um there were a lot of concerns raised um and and feedback given, um including some concerns I have that it could uh potentially expose cities to litigation, um because a a number of the um avenues that are being proposed are are untested. Um so there are a lot of concerns in in that area, but um definitely one, especially with which if it qualifies, um will be one that that we'll want to follow. Um we also had a a meeting last week um to or this week, I should say, to plan our events for the League of Cities Peninsula Division. Um and I just want to highlight and invite Councilman Landry and of course, my other colleagues. Um we will have an event coming up in the next couple of months on mental health specifically. Um so I I know it's an area that a lot of us care about um on this body, so I'll make sure to circulate the information once we have more. Um it should be sometime in March. Um so um I'll send that information out when we have it. Um we had a VTA workshop um to just kind of uh orient, especially the new members like myself, uh to the VTA Board, um which was extremely informative, packed with a lot of information. Um and and then we had a a very long uh VTA meeting, a lot of closed session items, but one of the things um for the public meeting, um the the major thing was uh findings of necessity that are moving along the um Silicon Valley part um extension. Um so uh really important work that that's continuing there.
Great, thank you. So I attended um our first meeting of the West Valley Mayors and Managers Meeting with Brian and uh we have a good group of uh West Valley colleagues and um Campbell's the host city this year, but we agreed that um we would be rotating among the the five cities as far as the location from month to month. And we also discussed several uh discussion or agenda topics for the year um and came up with quite a list, so we'll be narrowing that down um for each meeting. I also attended the Cities Association Meeting last week and we talked about um committees and priorities and didn't come to a final resolution, but we will be discussing that this week at the at the meeting. And then um I also attended the the State of the County and the swearing in of Board President Susan Ellenberg last week, as well as the um swearing in of Sheriff Bob Johnson at the County Administration Building. And I wanted to announce that um that February February sixteenth is our council priority session um from four to seven P M. And that our next regular meeting is February twenty first, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting.